Welcome. Today is Wednesday, July 9th, 2025. It is now 6:02 PM and this is a regular City Commission meeting of the City of West Miami. This meeting is called to order. Please rise for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening. Heavenly Father, we gather today to serve our community with wisdom, fairness, and integrity. Grant us clarity in our decisions, patience in our disagreement, and unity in our decisions. May we honor those we represent and act always with purpose and compassion. May this meeting be guided by mutual respect and a shared commitment to the common good. Let our choices reflect both responsibility and hope, building a future that benefits all members of our community. Amen.
Thank you. And the Pledge of Allegiance led by President Trump.
America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. That was nice and loud. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Item three, roll call. Mayor Eric Diaz-Padrón.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ivan Chavez Jr.
Here.
Commissioner Juan Blanes.
Present.
Commissioner Gustavo Ceballos.
Present.
Commissioner Luciano Suarez.
Yes.
Mayor, you have quorum.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item four, presentation of minutes for approval for June 4th, 2025, regular commission meeting.
We have a motion?
Motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Any against? Hearing none, item passes. I'd like, we'll take public comments first and then I'd like to take something out of order before the manager's report. I know that a lot of people are here for a specific reason and maybe you have plans after, so I want to make sure that we get to you first. So let's take public comments now and then we'll, we'll put the report of the manager on hold and we'll take, we'll take item. What item am I looking for?
The presentation?
Yes.
Okay, we have 11A.
No, no. The.
Yes, 11A. We'll take 11A out of order.
So at this time, public comments are now open. Anyone for public comment? State your name and address for the record, please.
Carlos Padron, 6226 Southwest 10th Street. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, and dedicated city staff. My name is Carlos Padron and I am a proud resident of West Miami. I'm here to take a moment to express my deep gratitude for the incredible work you all do to make our city such a special place to live, work, and raise our families. To the Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners, your leadership sets a strong foundation for our community. Your vision for West Miami creates a welcoming environment for all of us. From improving our parks to ensuring our streets are safe and clean, your thoughtful policies directly enhance our quality of life. I know these decisions take time, collaboration, and tough choices, and we're fortunate to have your dedication guiding us. I see the passion you bring to every decision and it doesn't go unnoticed. And to the city staff, your hard work keeps West Miami running smoothly every day. Whether it's maintaining our infrastructure, organizing community events, or responding to residents' needs, your efforts make a real difference. Events like the recent farmer's market and Fourth of July festival reflect your commitment to making West Miami a place we're all proud to call home. I'd also like to thank the police and firefighters of our great community. It feels very safe to raise a family in West Miami and we are very proud to call it home. Together, you fostered a community that feels like family and I'm grateful for your service. Keep up the amazing work and know that residents like me see and appreciate all that you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Padron. And we're glad to have you in person here. I know you watch pretty much every meeting, so. Anyone else for public comments? Seeing none. Any speaker cards? Madam Clerk?
No, no, no more, Mr. Mayor.
All right, so public comments is now closed. Let's move on to item 11A, please.
Item 11A, under new business agenda items, presentation of proclamation to Amor Reyes, honoring her years of service to education, her distinguished leadership as principal of Sylvania Heights Elementary School, and recognizing her retirement.
We can't even get through the item. We couldn't even get through the item before, that's how loved you are here. That's how loved you are here, Principal. And we have, we're joined by our school board member, Monica Calucci. And, you know, we'll bring, we'll bring everyone up here in a moment, but I'll start by saying we've, I've known you for quite a bit of time now. You know, I joined the commission when I was 23. I think we've probably met before that. We've worked together for a long time. We've accomplished a lot together. If you really look at it, we've accomplished a lot together and we're very thankful for the work you've done for the school. I know the kids and the parents are. And, you know, the school is the heart of our community and is our public school. And, you know, with the leadership of it, I think that the kids got an incredible experience. We're very grateful that you were able to lead them in that and we're going to miss you. But, but I know that you can look back proudly at the work you've done, so thank you.
So I just want to say that I'm going to reiterate what the mayor said, but good leadership goes a long way and it's what our kids learn in school and take them home to their families, but it's also what the employees, the other staff, the teachers that work under your leadership gain from it. And I have a lot of close friends of mine, old teachers that are still teaching in the school and they rave about you. They say your name, Amor, means love in Spanish and they love you and what you've given to them over the course of the time that you've been here. It's really something special and we are going to miss you, like the mayor said, and you always have a home here in West Miami.
Commissioners?
Well, I'd like to say something, but he almost said everything. Because she was, you know, her name, Amor, in Spanish mean love. She was a lovely principal. Everybody liked you. Everybody loved you and you deserve it. Because you was, you has been so good so far. I remember when I had a piano and I was thinking to give the piano and I gave it to the school. One of the ideas given to the Silvania was you. Because I said, oh, Amor is so lovely. She's so good. Let me give my piano to the Silvania because the principal will take good care. And that, and you did that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, go ahead.
Although I haven't had the pleasure of working with you yet, maybe in your future endeavors, there are few professions that are more rightly deserving of a retirement than people in the education system. My wife is a 15-year veteran of the school system, so I want to thank you for everything you've done for our community and it definitely goes unnoticed. So thank you so much and wish you all the best in your retirement.
Commissioner Blanes?
Amor, thank you for your passion, for your time, for your service, your dedication to our kids. And I wish you Godspeed in the near future. I know that you're going to be very successful wherever you go, whatever it is that you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
And before we, before we come up, I want to give a moment also to our school board. Remember to also say what you want to say before you call up and give your proclamations.
I just want.
Wait, you go to the mic if we can, you can pull, we can pull the mic back, but you can go on this side if you want.
Oh, sure.
So for those of you that don't know me, I'm Monica Calucci. I'm the vice chair of Miami-Dade County Public Schools. And my story with Ms. Amor Reyes goes back a long time ago when I first started teaching. We taught together at Everglades K-8 Center. When I first came out of college, she was a star then and she's a star now and she will continue to always be one. And like everyone said, Amor means love. She led that school with her heart, heart, body, and soul. And she emanated that love to all of the students, the faculty, and the staff. So thank you for your years of service. You really, truly made a difference, difference in the lives of so many. God bless you and enjoy many, many more years of retirement. Don't worry, you could always come back. Our doors are always open at Miami-Dade County Public Schools. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you so much, the opportunity to allow me to speak and to the commission for this wonderful acknowledgement of one of Miami-Dade County Public Schools finest.
Absolutely. Stay up here.
And whereas this raised his commitment to cultivating strong partnerships with parents and the community, led to an unprecedented 85% increase in parental involvement, further enhancing school's culture of collaboration, creativity, and care. And whereas retiree's efforts to create inclusive learning environments, promote academic excellence, and empower students have left an indelible mark on countless families and the greater community. And whereas the City of West Miami recognizes the extraordinary impact of educators like Ms. Reyes, whose legacy of service, compassion, and innovation will continuously inspire generations to come. Therefore, I, Mayor Eric Diaz-Padrón, Vice Mayor Ivan Chavez Jr., Commissioners Juan Blanes, Gustavo Ceballos, and Luciano Suarez, do hereby proclaim with deep appreciation and admiration our heartfelt gratitude for Amor Reyes and his dear Dave, July 9th, 2025.
Monica, do you want to still read it?
Yeah.
Ms. Calucci. Ms. Calucci. I just want to thank the mayor and the commission for being gracious and opening up their home here in City Hall to me to allow me to present this proclamation on behalf of the Miami-Dade County Public School Board, to Ms. Amor Reyes, thank you for your years of service and for all you've done. So thank you. Thank you.
Wow, thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Padron, distinguished West Miami Commissioners and wonderful guests, my family, my she-family. I am truly honored and humbled to receive this proclamation. And Ms. Calucci, you really surprised me. Thank you so much. Mayor Padron, I would like to thank you for your leadership and to the entire commission for bestowing this recognition upon me. It has been a privilege to serve alongside a community that values education, partnership, and the well-being of the children of West Miami. Over the past 15 years, our collaboration, because we have worked truly together, I will not miss the four o'clock calls from the chief of police for my alarm. I would especially like to thank Commissioner Chavez, a Sylvania Heights alumni, if you didn't know, whose unwavering dedication and genuine care have left a lasting impact in our school and the families that we serve at Sylvania Heights. Thank you all for the many years and your great support, trust, and encouragement. This honor means more than words can ever say. Thank you. Thank you all.
Well, I wish we could stick in this item forever. But unfortunately, we have to, you know, keep going. We do have another feel-good item, though. Can you read item 11B, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item 11B, presentation of proclamation celebrating National Sanitation Workers Week.
And who do we have here from our department?
Mayor, if I can have the director come up and, and name all the employees that are here, but I do have one thing I want to say. I want to be able to say that in our opinion, these are the, we provide the best service in all of the county and we want to commend them for all they do. Rain or shine. Rain or shine and including holidays, they work to ensure that our trash and our bulk are picked up in a timely manner and they are always there to help our residents whenever they need it. And I want to say personally, as a manager of the city, I'm very proud that these, these people are part of our team and their duties and their efforts do not go unnoticed.
Absolutely. And I'll say as, as a young buck, you know, looking to, when I first got to the city commission and I started looking for things to, you know, which we change, you know, I looked at every department and the residents would tell me, before I said anything, the residents would tell me, the one department, just don't look at, don't look at changing, don't touch anything in the sanitation department. They are amazing and they remained amazing and I'm glad we've been able to continue. We've been able to give them some more resources to do their job more effectively and, and less straining, but they are out there on every holiday on, you know, our, and notices go out and this is unique to our city almost, I believe. The notices go out and it says, you know, our city is closed, but it won't affect trash service. The sanitation department does an incredible job and, and I know the residents are very happy with them and that makes me very happy with them.
And again, if I can have the director come up and announce each one of us here.
Yes, please.
And have him come up so that we can thank him personally.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for hosting us today. I'm also very proud of our team. They work very hard and glad to bring Edwin Ramos.
Jorge Hernandez. Luis Núñez. Eric Jennings.
Bryant?
Bryant.
Come on, David.
I'm going to ask that the commission join us.
Yes.
Public proclamation to the City of West Miami, whereas the health, safety, and quality of life for the City of West Miami depend on the dedication and hard work of sanitation professionals who provide essential services to our residents, businesses, and public spaces. And whereas sanitation workers play a critical role in protecting public health, preserving the environment, maintaining the splendour and beauty of our neighborhoods, parks, and roadways, often performing their duties in demanding and hazardous conditions. And whereas the contributions of sanitation workers are vital to the daily functioning of our community, yet their efforts frequently go unrecognized. And whereas National Sanitation Workers Week provides an opportunity to hold these men and women, raise, to honor these men and women, raise awareness of the importance of sanitation and express gratitude for their invaluable work. And whereas the City of West Miami is proud to recognize and celebrate the contributions of our sanitation workforce in dedication and service help ensure a cleaner, healthier, and more sustainable community for all. Therefore, myself, Mayor Eric Diaz-Padrón, Vice Mayor Ivan Chavez Jr., Commissioners Juan Blanes, Gustavo Ceballos, Luciano Suarez, do hereby proclaim June 16th, 2024, 2025, National Sanitation Workers Week, but more importantly, recognizing these fine gentlemen who are frankly the one of our best.
Say a pass for the leave.
I would like to say a few words to our men and women of the Public Works Department. I want to speak as a resident of the City of West Miami. I've been a resident of the City of West Miami now, I think, 38 or 39 years. And myself and my family have enjoyed the greatest possible, best, second-to-none service as far as sanitation goes in this county. I had part of my fence removed and replaced and they located all the old fence on the side of the house. This was on July 3rd. And then I thought to myself, wow, you know, I wonder when they're going to pick it up. It's going to be there for July 4th. It's not going to look too good. The fireworks, it can fall in the wood and set a fire, you know. As a fireman, I was thinking all these bad things that could possibly happen. So I went out there on July 4th, early in the morning and to my surprise, there was sanitation. There were the guys picking it up and they pick it, they picked it all up and loaded it all up and hauled it away and in a matter of 15 minutes. And, you know, I was deeply touched and grateful that that happened because it was a concern for me. And through the years, it's been like that. Like the, like the manager said, rain or shine or, or holiday, you know, I thank you. I thank, me and my family, thank you for being out there and doing what you do because that's what makes the quality of life in the City of West Miami better than anywhere else. You know, having that service. And you don't realize how important that service is. And quite frankly, we've never lost it. That's why we don't, don't know how, how bad it is. But, but once you lose or you lack that service, it hits you and then you realize how important it is. So from the bottom of my heart, I really, really do thank you. I really do appreciate you, day in and day out. You guys do a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I'm going to keep it short because I'm.
So thank you for, to you, and I cannot tell you in other words. Thank you very much, because the police department, your department, are the best in town. I mean, the best in the county, I can say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Before getting into the manager's report, I just want to shout out, we've had an intern working with us for the summer from St. Brendan. Came very highly recommended from her faculty there, and she's been working with my office and a couple of other offices in the city. And today is her last day, and she's here with us today, Eva Diaz. She's been doing some really, really good work. We're very sad we got to lose her early. You know, they should just extend summer. Where's the, where's this core member? But we're very happy that we had the opportunity to work with her, and we, she's entering her senior year, and we wish her all the luck as she continues her, you know, finishes off her high school and gets ready to go away for college. So thank you. Thank you for joining us this summer. All right, Mr. Manager, now you may commence.
Well, not quite yet, but as part of my manager's report, I would like to have Javier Betancourt, the executive director of the Citizens Independent Transportation Trust, come up and give us a little presentation on their efforts, and I appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I'm going to cut you off as an aside.
Please.
Mr. Betancourt, when he first joined as executive director of the CITT, was, I was appointed, as my first government position was on the CITT, the board of trustees, so we go back a while now.
You stole my thunder.
Yeah, well, I told you I would cut you off for a reason. Go ahead, Mr. Betancourt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for giving me some time here on the agenda. I know it's a packed agenda, and it's a long presentation, but I'm going to go through it very fast. I may even skip some slides so that you can get to your business.
We love that.
I live just down the road. I'm not a city resident, but I shop at your Publix, you know, I got my seafood at your fisheries market, so, and my family has strong, longstanding ties to this community. So I do have a special place in my heart for West Miami. I'm also a former City of Coral Gables employee commissioner, as is my municipal program manager, Mariana Price, who works most closely with your cities, and so we understand cities and the work that you do and really appreciate it. So again, Javier Betancourt, executive director of the Citizens Independent Transportation Trust, or CITT. I'm going to tell you a little bit about us, about the half penny sales tax for transportation, and then finally, about the projects, programs, and services that that half penny pays for. So about twenty-three years ago, you all are too young to have voted at the time, but your parents went to the ballot box, and they saw this ballot on their, this referendum on their ballot. And it asked the good cities, good citizens of Miami-Dade County whether they would charge themselves an extra half penny sales tax to go towards a series of transportation improvements under the banner of People's Transportation Plan, or PTP. Some of you may remember at the time. It's important to note that the last sentence in that referendum also established the Citizens Independent Transportation Trust, which is my organization, to act as a watchdog over those funds, to make sure it was spent in accordance with the promises and wasn't diverted elsewhere. That referendum language passed, the sales tax started getting collected, CITT was formed. Our mission is to monitor, audit, investigate, and oversee the use of the funds and the implementation of the People's Transportation Plan. So we are not Miami-Dade Transit, we're not Public Works, we're not even the TPO, right? We don't build, operate anything. We're simply the watchdog over the funds. But we work closely with all our partner transportation agencies. So we are governed by a fifteen-member board of volunteers. As the mayor said, he used to be one of them, and we're very proud of that. Your former city manager was also one of the original members of the CITT. So again, this city has always had close ties to our organization. We currently have three vacancies, none of them in this district, but if anyone's ever interested in being a member of the CITT, we encourage you to apply. And even if there isn't a vacancy today, there may be one tomorrow, we'll keep your application on file. And you could do that by visiting our website, miamidade.gov/cit. The District Six representative currently is Robert O'Wano, again, someone who I believe has done and maybe continues to do work for the city of West Miami, so more ties there to this great city. Again, to be a member, you know, all you have to do is have an interest in transportation. You don't have to be an expert. You can't be an elected official, a candidate for office, or have any financial conflicts of interest with the county. Other than that, everyone is free to apply, okay? The volunteer board is supported by my office. We're a small team, by county standards, of now twelve people, and we do all the kind of professional analysis, you know, that supports the work of the trust. One of the key functions that we do, and this we actually outsource now to the office of the county clerk and comptroller, that has changed, is audit all of the cities in the county on a regular basis to ensure that the cities in the county are using their funds appropriately. We have had great success with the city of West Miami, no audit findings in recent reports. So you're doing a great job managing your money, and we really appreciate that. And Mariana later is going to give a shout out to the team she works with on a regular basis, who are all doing great work on your behalf. So enough about us, let's talk about the money. A half a penny doesn't sound like a lot, but let me tell you, it adds up, okay, to the tune of nearly four hundred million dollars a year. And since the inception of the half penny, it's collected about five billion dollars. So, you know, that money sounds like a lot, but at the end of the day, transportation and transit is expensive, and you'd be surprised how little that actually funds at the end of the day. There's a lot of misinformation in the community about where this money's gone, that it was misspent, that it was, you know, used for other things. The reality is, two-thirds of it historically has gone to Miami-Dade Transit. Twenty percent of the money is guaranteed to go to the cities, and we distribute that to the cities on a pro-rata basis. So cities with larger populations like Miami get more money, smaller cities like West Miami get a little less. And the cities have to use a minimum of twenty percent of what you get on transit. You can use up to eighty percent on other transportation, so roadways, bicycle pedestrian traffic calming, but at least twenty percent or more has to go towards transit. And we'll talk about what you do with that money shortly. I'm proud to say that less than one percent goes to our office for overhead and oversight. We're allowed to go up to five percent, but we have a policy of saying, no, we want the money to go to the street to actually help move people, so we keep our overhead very small. This is the same information over time. All that really demonstrates is that there were two periods where the sales tax dropped, and it wouldn't surprise you to know that that was during the Great Recession and the Great Pandemic. Now, next year, with the state's recent termination of the business rent tax, we are going to see a dip in surtax revenue, because they're estimating twenty-seven million dollars less next year, so all the cities will probably get a little less. Hopefully, you know, improved economic activity will make up for that. We'll skip that. If you're really interested in digging into the numbers, we're very transparent. We have everything online, including a forty-year pro forma that shows every penny going in, every penny coming out, over forty years. So if you want to geek out, go online, you could find it there. But enough about the money, let's talk about what people care about, the projects, programs, and services that they were promised, that these sales tax dollars were good towards. So a lot of promises were made twenty-three years ago. People tend to remember one of them, which is that we were going to expand Metro Rail to every corner of the county. And that was indeed one of the promises, and one of the most challenging to fulfill. However, there were also promises for improved bus service. There was a promise of fare-free transit for all seniors, regardless of income, what is now called the Golden Passport, promised fare-free Metro Mover. There was a promise of smaller neighborhood improvements, like improved intersections and bicycle pedestrian projects. And then finally, what people forget is there were over forty major highway and roadway improvements that were promised as part of this. So how's the county, how's the community done? I'm most proudest of the municipal program. And with that, I'm going to ask Mariana Price to come up and just spend a couple minutes talking about that program, and specifically, West Miami. Mariana?
Thank you, Javier. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and fellow commissioners. I'm Mariana Price, I'm the municipal program manager, and I oversee the municipal program. City of West Miami, let me give my shout-outs at the top. We have Lizzie, Lizzie Pitzer, Yvonne Picado, Cody McCall, Frank Alonso, and Jenny Polanis Hall. They are a great team. They submit reports on time, and you should be, you have a lot to be proud of. They're a great team. Thank you. How do we go to next? Oh, thank you. Okay. So, city of West Miami, you received four hundred and fifty thousand dollars last year, and you're receiving, projected to receive, a little bit less this year. That actually might not be true, because things started to look up mid-year this year. But city of West Miami goes above and beyond. You received four fifty-seven last year, and you actually spent almost double that. There's a minimum requirement of spending twenty percent of your funds on transit, which is what the Freebie is. City of West Miami has this Freebie program, as you know, and you blow it out of the water. You spend way more than the twenty percent. So that's really great. The ridership increased actually eighty-one percent year-over-year with the Freebie program. So it's a very successful program, and we hope to see that projection to continue going north. So my role as municipal program manager, I hold quarterly meetings, committee meetings, and I'm always here to assist the municipalities in finding out ways that they can spend their surtax funds on eligible uses, and to improve any way that they can move residents around, including with a renewed focus on micro-mobility. So bike ped pedestrian, bike pedestrian infrastructure is very important, as we've learned, and it's actually very effective. And so this is the first year that I've started to keep track of it. I don't have a stat for West Miami, because there is no micro-mobility here, but it is something that you may want to consider, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mariana. And again, you really should be proud. Freebie, I think, serves over twenty communities in Miami-Dade County, and they always point out that their service in West Miami is one of the most highly utilized. Considering it's such a small program with the funds that you have available, you do a great job really leveraging that, so keep up the great work. As I said earlier, there were over forty roadway and highway projects that were considered as part of the PTP. Nearly all of those have been completed. The remainders are in some stage of being completed. One of those roadway projects is really about making our intersections more efficient and getting people through them faster. And the county is doing that through something called the Advanced Traffic Management System. It's basically a fancy term for smart signals, right? We all have smart technology on our phones and other places, but our signals are antiquated. They're on the old-fashioned timer. And there's no reason for that anymore with the technology that we have in our pocket. So they're replacing all the traffic signals and all the software so that they can have real-time kind of adaptive signals and move cars more quickly. So they are doing this throughout the county, they will be doing it here in the city of West Miami, so please look out for that. But the focus now really is on transit, because that is where we're furthest behind as a county compared to not only the world, but even other similar cities in the U.S. You know, for a county of our size, we really ought to have a world-class transit system, and we have a good one. We had the best in the state of Florida, but we could be doing so much better. So that is where we are now focused. The good news is, we have replaced all the fleets, so the Metro Rail, Metro Bus, Metro Mover fleets are all fairly new, and that means that they, they're better maintained, they perform better, it's a better customer experience. The county did expand Metro Rail to Miami International Airport. That was the one Metro Rail expansion that they were able to achieve. The cities, again, have done a great job with the trolleys and increasingly on-demand service, and we've even invested in Tri-Rail, so, and Bright Line, which I know is not in this community, but it's all interconnected. So those are all positives. The county has also enhanced the bus system through something called the Better Bus Network, which, you know, adds more, drops the headways on the popular routes, and just streamlines the overall service. That's led to an increase in bus ridership. As I said earlier, Metro Rail to the airport has been great. However, we have to admit that most of those rapid transit expansions have yet to take place, and it's because Metro Rail is extremely expensive and difficult to achieve. And so that half penny, frankly, was never enough to really fulfill all those promises. But the county hasn't given up. They have adopted something called the Smart Plan, Strategic Miami Area Rapid Transit Plan, and it's to expand rapid transit along those corridors that were promised, with the caveat that it's not necessarily going to be Metro Rail. They're looking for more realistic technologies to achieve this at a cheaper price point. So what are those? So we have the South Corridor, Beach Corridor, East-West Corridor, Kendall Corridor, Northeast Corridor, and North Corridor. The good news is that the South Corridor is about to open. This is going to be gold standard bus rapid transit. If you go from, you know, down south Dixie Highway, from Dade Land to Florida City, you'll see it being built over to your right, and it's going to behave very much like a train, even though it's a bus. It's not going to have to stop at intersections, it's in a dedicated lane, it's going to have level boarding, and it's going to have prepaid fares. So that's going to be a great success, and that is hopefully going to open in late September. The Beach Corridor is a proposed Metro Mover connection across the MacArthur Causeway connecting downtown to Miami Beach, and then another leg up to the Design District that is in planning, design, and engineering. The East-West Corridor, which is probably the one closest to you, was going to be bus rapid transit along eight thirty-six. The county has since taken a step back and is rethinking that. They're looking potentially at either using the CSX rail lines to do some kind of commuter rail, like Tri-Rail, or potentially running something on Flagler Street, which I know is obviously much closer to you, some kind of either BRT or even potentially Metro Mover. So all of that is being discussed and is in the planning stages. The Kendall Corridor has kind of been set aside. That one is difficult to achieve, because the only way you can run any bus rapid transit there is to take away a lane of traffic, and if you've ever been on Kendall, the last thing you want to do is lose another lane of traffic, because it's already a parking lot. So that one's kind of hard. The Northeast Corridor is the next one that's most promising. Bright Line already runs there, the tracks are already there, they're a willing partner. All we need to do is add some stations in between Aventura and downtown, and then introduce a cheaper train like Tri-Rail to bring that down to a price point that people can afford. Because Bright Line, as wonderful as it is, is really expensive, and it's not a solution for everyday commuters. But all the parties are negotiating this. We have some federal funding, we had state funding, we kind of lost it this last legislative session, but I think that was unintentional, they're going to try to put it back. And finally, the North Corridor. So this is a proposed Metro Rail expansion along Twenty-seventh Avenue to the Broward County line, including what I still call Joe Robbie Stadium, Hard Rock Stadium. Now, unfortunately, because this is the one that is slated to be Metro Rail, it's also the one that, right now, is least likely to happen, because it is so expensive. This is only going to be possible with a large amount of federal funding, and I just don't see that happening anytime soon. But we remain optimistic. We've also invested in a number of parking rides. All of this is really expensive, and we have to look under every rock to develop what we call a funding lasagna, just layers and layers and layers of different funding sources to accomplish this very ambitious plan. And I'm sorry to show you this at dinnertime, I know we're all hungry, so I will just hurry along here. Additional areas of focus for us, first-last-mile solutions, that is bicycle pedestrian connectivity, micro-transit like your Freebie. You know, you could build out this rapid transit plan, but if people can't get to the station or get from the station to their place of employment or their home, they're not going to use it. So first-last mile is very important. Enhancing county municipal connectivity is very important as well. We don't have one transit system in Miami, we have thirty-seven. We have Miami-Dade Transit, Bright Line, Tri-Rail, and thirty-four cities all doing their own thing. And, you know, if I just want to get from point A to point B, I don't care who's running what, I just want to do that efficiently, seamlessly, and, you know, we're still working towards that. So it's important that cities like West Miami really try to coordinate and connect with the larger system, and I think you do that. Improving the customer experience, again, it doesn't matter if you build it, if it's not well-maintained, if it doesn't perform well, if it's not clean, if it's not safe, people won't use it. And so that's a key focus of ours. And finally, community engagement. I think we've done a bad job as a county of informing the public on what's happened with their taxpayer dollars, and so I made it a commitment when I came to this job to do that. So I'm always out in the community, like I am today, telling the story. This is what's happened with your taxpayer funds, good, bad, and different. You deserve to know. And then as an informed voter, you can make an informed choice. One of the ways I do that is we have a podcast every other Thursday. It's called Mobility Matters. I've had all sorts of officials and agency heads, and even like transit writers on it, community leaders, so I would invite the mayor or anyone. He has been, but I invite you to join again, because I know All of this is really expensive and we have to look under every rock to develop what we call a funding lasagna, just layers and layers and layers of different funding sources to accomplish this very ambitious plan. And I'm sorry to show you this at dinnertime. I know we're all hungry, so I will just hurry along here. Additional areas of focus for us, first, last mile solutions. That is bicycle pedestrian connectivity, micro transit like your freebie. You know, you could build out this rapid transit plan, but if people can't get to the station or get from the station to their place of employment or their home, they're not going to use it. So first, last mile is very important. Enhancing county municipal connectivity is very important as well. We don't have one transit system in Miami. We have thirty-seven. We have Miami-Dade Transit, Bright Line, Tri-Rail, and thirty-four cities all doing their own thing. And, you know, if I just want to get from point A to point B, I don't care who's running what. I just want to do that efficiently, seamlessly. And, you know, we're still working towards that. So it's important that cities like West Miami really try to coordinate and connect with the larger system. And I think you do that. Improving the customer experience, again, it doesn't matter if you build it, if it's not well-maintained, if it doesn't perform well, if it's not clean, if it's not safe, people won't use it. And so that's a key focus of ours. And finally, community engagement. I think we've done a bad job as a county of informing the public on what's happened with their taxpayer dollars. And so I made it a commitment when I came to this job to do that. So I'm always out in the community, like I am today, telling the story. This is what's happened with your, your taxpayer funds, good, bad, and different. You deserve to know. And then as an informed voter, you can make an informed choice. One of the ways I do that is we have a podcast every other Thursday. It's called Mobility Matters. I've had all sorts of officials and agency heads and even like transit riders on it, community leaders. So I would invite the mayor or anyone. He has been, but I invite you to, to, to join again because I know a lot of things have happened since then. So, but if anyone is interested in being on the program, I, I would invite you. It's just down the street in South Miami. And finally, the CITT Ambassador Program. So we can't have our eyes and ears everywhere. So we launched a program two years ago where we enlist our transit riders to be ambassadors. You apply. If you're accepted, you get access to an app. You provide regular feedback on your observations on that app. You know, the bus was late, the driver was courteous, et cetera. We then submit that to the county for their system or if they're making an observation on a city's system, we'll send that to you so that you can address it. And that way you nip that problem in the bud before it festers and becomes a bigger issue. The ambassadors get awarded points for participating and they can exchange those points for mobility rewards, free Uber, free Lyft, discounted transit passes. So it's a great program. If any of your residents, you know, who ride transit on a regular basis are interested, they can apply online, miami-dade.gov/cit. I know that was all to cover and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Well, I would just, I'll call you a liar. You said you were going to skip some slides. You didn't skip a single slide.
I skipped bullet points on the slides. Take it back.
No, we're thankful you're here. You, you covered everything pretty robustly. I obviously not only work with you in this capacity, but as Vice Chair of the TPO and I know we've been working, we've been examining some of the bike ped stuff a little bit closely. I'm honored that, in my role as Vice Chair of the TPO, the Chairman pointed a task force to look at bicycle fatalities and, and injuries reduction. And he may be Chair of that, of that board. That's including Commissioner, Vice Chair McGee, Commissioner Regalado, Commissioner, Senator Garcia, Senator Garcia, and Mayor Alavés Soma. And we'll be happy to, when we start going through that process, I'm sure we'll be talking a lot to see how we can fund these new infrastructures that, that we're seeing to make sure we get that vitality number down.
We'd love to. Our members are very strong supporters of bicycle pedestrian investments. They're really constantly pushing the county and, and the municipalities to do more in that area. We have funded Vision Zero at the county already, which is going to address some of those issues, but we'd love to do more.
Absolutely. We will definitely be calling on you.
Thank you.
So, thank you. Does anybody else have any questions for Mr. Benicourt or Ms. Price?
No. Great. Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Benicourt, congratulations. Your presentation has been great. Your presentation has been great.
Thank you.
Oh my God, you know the presentation.
I appreciate it.
No, very well.
This is actually, I presented to every city. This was my last one and I say the best for last.
You did good.
You're just down the street from me and I really do love this city, so thank you.
Mariana, she did good.
She did great.
You too.
Yeah, I was worried. You went from amor to el dolor and I'm like, how is this going to fly? But I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead, Mr. Manager.
Mayor, the next person I'd like to call up is Jerry Donates so that he could present our, the findings from our audit that was for last year's audit and then from our auditors.
Yes, sir. Jim Martin. Good to see you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Mayor Diaz-Pedron, City Commissioners, City Administration. It's a pleasure to be here. Once again, thank you so much for having me. My name is Jerry Donates with Jim Martin CPA. I was the partner involved in overseeing the financial statement audit for the fiscal year ended September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. With me back, back here is the manager, Francis Cabrera Yec, who was the manager on the engagement. So I'm just going to briefly go over the, the results of the audit and discuss some of the topics that we're, we're required to go over with you. In terms of the audit report, the report has an unmodified opinion that indicates that the statements are presented fairly in all material respects. There are no, there were no new accounting policies adopted during the year, except there was a consideration of a new standard related to accounting changes and errors, but the application of, of the existing policies did not change. To note, just for presentation purposes, in prior years, there was a Recreation Fund and a Community Center Fund. This year, that was combined into one, so both activities are in one fund. That's called the Parks and Recreation Fund, in case you were looking over the, the financials. In terms of estimates, significant accounting estimates affecting the financial statements include depreciation of capital assets, compensated absences, liabilities, and the net pension liability related to the Florida retirement system. We test and review the calculations to make sure that they're in accordance with certain agreements and actuarial information and that they're recorded accurately. In regards to the audit process and the procedures that are completed, we did not have any difficulties in dealing with management while we're performing our audit procedures and analysis, and we did not have any disagreements with management. This year, we did encounter some challenges in, in completing the audit. This is, I believe, you know, mainly attributed to the implementation of the new accounting system. I, you know, I myself have been involved in our firm's implementation of new systems and other clients and things like that. So I understand, you know, there's a significant undertaking in doing that. So, you know, some challenges with the general ledger details and, and reclassing some things and that resulted in some material audit adjustments that were posted. So as a result of the, of the number of the adjustments, there is a finding related to the number of adjustments, adjusting journal entries needed to correct certain misstatements that we, we discussed it with management. I've, I've already met with the Finance Director in order to address that and correct it for, for two thousand and twenty-five. And there's also a finding related to, you know, a technical finding regarding expenditures over budget in total and the fact that there wasn't a formal budget amendment completed after year end. I know, you know, various reasons that that happened, but the key is that commission-approved expenditures that are not included in the original budget just have to be, you know, you have to have a formal budget amendment sixty, sixty days after year end. I know there was a lot going on with the MuniLink implementation and the costs related to that as well. So that's, you know, that's something that's easily cleared up as well for next year. In terms of some of the balances, the total fund balance in the General Fund decreased by approximately one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. However, the unassigned fund balance combined with the committed fund balance that's set aside for cash flows did increase by approximately eight hundred thousand dollars. That's related to changes in other reserve balances and things of that nature. The total unassigned fund balance and that amount set aside for cash flow reserves is approximately five million as of September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. In regards to the enterprise funds, the total fund balance decreased by approximately one million dollars there this year. Now, you know, that's, that's been discussed before with the internal fund balances and the enterprise funds generating profits, which the MuniLink implementation is expected to help in that regard in terms of the utility billing and things of that nature. And then, you know, if not, then General Fund will have to transfer funding or forgive balances. But I know that the management is working on that and addressing that and the reason for the, the capital improvements that have been made. So in, in regards to that, it, you know, it is significant to note that there have been capital investments spent over the last couple of years with the expectation it's going to help the city flourish in the future, right? There's, you know, there's a different focus on the, on the two statements that are presented, which one is the fund basis that's more focused on expenditures and the other one is a government-wide overall basis where those capital investments are, are reported as assets. So, you know, that helps the, the city's net position from that perspective versus the fund basis is more focused on expenditures and current cash flows and things like that. So, you know, as always, continue to monitor cash flows, fund balances, and, and continue working with management. And, and then you guys will be able to address, you know, address the inter, inter fund balances and things of that nature. In terms of grants, there was two federal, there was a federal single audit and a Florida single audit for two thousand and twenty-four related to the funding spent on federal and state funding. The major federal program was related to the ARPA funding that was received a few years ago and the expenditures that were incurred during the year. And there were two state projects that were audited. We had no findings related to our compliance findings for the single audits. So that's, you know, high-level overview for, for the audit. And I, first of all, I want to thank the new Finance Director, Cody McCall. You know, he stepped in during the audit to help us close it out and, you know, the prior Finance Director for implementing the new accounting system and getting us as much as, as she could for what we needed. And then obviously the City Manager for, you know, giving us the time to go through everything in order to make sure that we were able to, to sort through the, the details and make sure everything is corrected, correctly recorded. But, you know, I, I think, as I mentioned, just the focus is on continuing improvements in the city and investing in the city. And, and I think the cash flows, you know, monitoring the cash flows and, and take it from there.
Yep, absolutely. I'm going to, I think we do this on a routine every year, so. And enterprise funds. The, you throw a big number out there on a, on a debt, so I just want to quickly explain it and then you confirm whether I'm saying is correct. All right, so what was, what was the, the debt owed from the enterprise funds to the General Fund?
Hold on. Now, I don't have, it's mixed in, so it could be other funds, but.
Yeah, just take a, take a swing at it, either, either combined or, or, or water.
In total, in total, total, the, the inter-fund liability, because there is an inter-fund asset, so the net amount is about three million, but the amount that's owed to other funds is about nine million.
Okay, so if the three million dollars, right, is a large part water, probably, water transfer, right?
That's the sewer and water, the two largest ones.
That's, that's General Fund. So what happens is the water system and the, the sewer system have their own funds and they're supposed to operate independently. And when they don't receive enough money, the General Fund, which is just the tax dollars, not the user fees, go and they're supplementing that amount of money. And they're supplementing it to the tune of three million dollars over a couple, over a number of years, right? So now, what is the deficit likely? And if you want, Cody could answer. What was the deficit projected for this year on the water fund, for example?
Well, the current.
Is there a deficit projected?
In twenty-five?
For, yes, for, for, that's, you're, you're going backwards. Is there, is there a deficit projected for twenty, for, for the, for the income ongoing?
Yeah, I haven't seen twenty-five.
Yeah, you go backwards. I got you.
Good evening. Now, as of right now, I think with our, we're really pleased with our findings in MuniLink. As of right now, we're not expecting a deficit for this year.
Beautiful. So hopefully after today, there's a item on the agenda which actually takes the water rate down two percent lower than it was previously. And even with that, there's no projected deficit. So the three million dollars, that three million dollars, let's say, is really a paper debt, right? Like as, as you mentioned, which is a debt owed from the water fund to the General Fund that will likely not, at some point, we'll have to figure out, you know, to forgive it or whatever. But it's, it's not, it's, it's not money that's being lost. We're not losing money, right? There's no interest on, there's no debt service on that money.
No, no, no. It's just, it's just like you mentioned, the General Fund supplementing and subsidizing the, the enterprise.
It's been subsidizing it for, take a, take a swing at how many years?
It's been several years, yeah.
Probably over ten, fifteen?
Yes, yes.
Fifteen years, maybe more?
Yes.
And that ends going forward, you know, this year, right? So no longer going on. So that's beautiful.
Yes, yeah, once that happens, then, you know, those, those inter-fund balances, they, they take care of them, you know, you can start either paying them back or, like I said, it starts decreasing over time, so.
Beautiful. Just wanted to make sure I was clear.
Yeah.
Anyone else have questions for the auditor?
Nope.
No, I think you're off the hook.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it, thank you guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let me continue with my manager's report and then let's get to the business of what we're really here for. I, I want to take a moment and thank everybody that helped us with our Fourth of July event. This team of highly motivated employees stepped up and delivered a fantastic event enjoyed by all. Gives me great satisfaction seeing the results and how well our employees got along to produce such a magnificent show. I want to especially acknowledge Ivan Picado, Mercy Soler, Soler, Rebecca Prieto, Yanara Madrono, our Public Services Staff, our Police Staff, and our Park Staff. We now have heard from the auditors and I'm, and we're proud to, proud to report that, that they're proud of hearing the report on how we are investing in our community and that our net value has increased, as has our reserves. But this was all done, this is all done as we increase services and as we invest in our systems to modernize our product. I want to make it clear, though, that our most valuable resource is our employees and that our morale is ever, is better than it's ever been. And we will continue investing in our employees to ensure that they have the proper tools to service our community. It is vitally important also to note the outstanding job of police force in doing this, in doing what they're doing. From the mayor requested bicycle patrols to the neighborhood outreach to walking the beat in our business district, the results are a substantial reduction in crime. I'd like to have the chief come up for a moment and talk about some of those stats, if it's possible.
Absolutely, Chief. I got a sneak peek, so.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. So I'm very happy, not only for everyone here, but obviously the residents that are listening that are here. We went ahead and we pulled the crime statistics. We began July first of two thousand and twenty-three through June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-four. Total crimes was four hundred and six. We then ran the numbers, July first of two thousand and twenty-four through June thirtieth, so just about ten days ago. The total reduction, well, the total crimes were two hundred and eighty-one, which represents a decrease in crime stats of thirty-one percent. And I'm very happy to report that. And I will tell you that a lot of this is in part, like the manager mentioned, the community outreach that we've had, obviously the reimplementation of the bike patrols, you know, just everything altogether. You know, the, the way that our guys and gals are patrolling, the fact that they're happy doing their job, that makes a big difference as well. And I will remind everybody, because he also asked me to figure out response time. So I went back an entire year and all the calls for service and the average response time here for a non-emergency is eighty seconds, eight zero seconds, so a minute and twenty seconds. So that's, that's unheard of anywhere. With that.
Yeah, does anybody else say? I would stop there.
I'd also like to take one small second and thank my command staff. Major Valencia, Lieutenant Arcia, and my XO, Eric Alvarez, who is the one that pushes the bike patrol. They do a phenomenal job and without them, I couldn't do my job as well as I do. So thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you. And Mr. Manager, I'll let you continue your report, but I would like to correct the chief on one thing. I don't think it's fair to call it a reimplementation, you know, from when the last time it was ninety, nineteen ninety-seven was, I think Marco Rubio's, you know, first thing, Secretary Rubio now, his first thing was bringing the bike patrol, but that was now a little while back. So we'll call it an implementation. Go ahead, Mr. Manager.
I also want to thank you, the mayor and the commission, as well as our state representatives, Eliana Garcia, Demi Basada, and also Governor Ron DeSantis. We hit a home run this year in terms of our grants that we've been able to acquire and that's a testament to the hard work of this mayor and this commission. We have reached, we have received grants for three hundred thousand dollars for stormwater pumps, six hundred thousand dollars for potable water system phase four, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for our West Miami Multi-Generational Recreation Center development, which is a total of one million, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we also were awarded a one and a half million dollar grant for us to be able to use it on a new boulevard for Southwest Sixteenth. We already, you already know what's going on with the water, so I'm not going to go through that. But I also would like now to start and go through a very quick presentation of where we are and what our upcoming budget season is like. Our title for this year will be reinvigorating our community. So what does a budget do? Well, a budget provides you with measurable, achievable goals. Those are the bullet points to go through it. I'm going to be, I am going to try to cut this down a little bit, so we also try to prioritize what matters most to our community, to our residents. We, we intend on making it transparent and accountable so that our funding and every resident knows exactly what we're spending it on and what it's for. And we want to make sure that we spend our funding properly. We want to prioritize programs and we want to forecast and make adjustments as we go along. So who calls West Miami home? Well, West Miami is located in the heart of Dade County, that is our area there. We're less than a, we're less than a square mile. Our population is a little bit over eight thousand. But, and our housing is strong, our median home value will taxable is five hundred and eleven thousand dollars. But in reality, our average home value right now is six hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. That's gone up almost two percent over the year. That's very, very positive and it's, it's one of the few places that actually is continuing to see increases. Our medium income has also jumped drastically. We're now at a medium income, household income of almost close to ninety thousand, ninety thousand dollars per, per person. So who are we? Well, this is the mayor and the commission, our charter officers, and I'm very honored to work alongside Dexter Leighton and Anetti Gonzalez, our city clerk. And this is all of our directors, below their directors and supervisors from, from Kenya Candelario, from our community center, Ivan Picado and Facilities, our new finance director and Cody McCall, Johann and George in I T, John Michael Lopez in Parks and Recs, Karia Costa in passports, our chief Pete Tagado, and our public services director, Lizzie Pitzer. Without my staff, and I'm going to echo what the chief said, without my staff, I wouldn't be able to do what we're doing. So what are the five functions of great management? Well, we need to make sure that we know and we have, we have a plan in place. We need to make sure that we can organize things in a, in a, in a proper way to achieve those goals. We need to lead by, by example. We need to ensure that we have the correct staffing levels to ensure that we can do what we're planning. And we need to evaluate how well we are achieving our goals. And that is the five functions of our management team. Organizational chart is here, starts with the residents, then the commission, then us charter officers, and then all our directors and all other departments. So what is some of the factors in creating our budget? Well, one of the good things is that inflation has moderated. A few years ago, it was seven, seven percent. It's forecasted to be around two and a half percent for next year. CPI is the same thing, it is moderate, it's moderated and in fact, energy prices have dropped substantially in the last year and we expect both of these to maintain stable for the upcoming fiscal year. So where are we in the truth and millage trim? Well, the truth and millage is, they gave us the estimates on June first, they gave us the final ones July first. Then in August, we need to ship it to, to the property tax appraiser's office, our, our millage rate, our, our maximum millage rate, I'm sorry, and they get mailed out by the end of August. So what is our budget meeting scheduled? Well, today we're starting with the first budget presentation. We have another one planned for August the twentieth. Then we have our first budget hearing September the ninth and our final budget hearing September the twenty-fourth. So where are we as the city? Well, as you can see, our tax revenues have increased dramatically over the years where our overall tax revenues are projected to be a little bit over six point one million dollars next year. We had a growth of six point eight percent in taxable value following last year's eight percent. Although that's still lower than quite a lot of places, we are staying, we are continuing to grow in valuation. But that's also, a, it's also incredibly, it's an incredible thing to notice and see the second line there, where we're now seventy-six point nine percent homesteaded properties. That's almost an increase of nineteen percent year to year. That's both, both good and bad. It caps us at a maximum increase of three percent every year. But it's also good because it insulates us from any potential downturn in the market because our taxable values are substantially lower than what the houses are selling for now. So again, one of the very first things I did when I became the city manager of West Miami was establish a fund balance. We were targeting three months of reserves for financial stability. That was two point three million dollars. We have achieved that and we've exceeded it, securing a strong fiscal health for the future. We have our compliant reserves, if you heard our auditors, are close to five million dollars, although this slide is not updated. That is the correct number. Showcasing our city's financial strength, our net position is now over twenty million dollars. Again, this graph shows how it's increased over the years. And our reserves soared past the GFOA suggested guidelines. We now have a little bit over three million dollars in our lockbox. We've had a clean audit opinion, as you heard from auditors, and our finances are looking very, very healthy going forward. Our net valuation as a city has grown eight hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars in the last year. We have a strong liquidity cash position. We have had substantial capital expansion that will allow us to provide the services to residents that they've always wanted and we have paid down significant debt. We are on track this year to exceed our projections in terms of revenue and these are all three enterprises and the most important one is the combined one. Right now, we have, in revenues, we have received sixteen point eight million dollars. We have four or five hundred thousand dollars to reach our goals and we fully expect that we will, we will surpass what we projected in our revenues for this year. Surplus growth, this is saving monies for our future. This is where we were a few short years ago and this is where we are now and actually that number is even higher than what we, when we did the slide. Our core beliefs, our city is committed to foster a vibrant community by managing our resources with unwavering fiscal responsibility and transparency. Our commitment is to deliver exceptional services to our residents and we do this by ensuring that we're fiscally responsive, we're committed to excellence. We are here to provide transparency and accountability to our residents and our commission. And lastly, but the most important of all, is we want to ensure that we improve the quality of life for all of our residents. So where are we with our millage trend since two thousand and four? And as you can see, this is a really nice graph. It shows where we were in two thousand and four and it shows the recent drop in the last few years to our current millage rate of five point nine two. In the last three years, it's dropped eleven percent. Now, this is an ongoing graph and it shows that we are now moving more and more toward the middle of a pack, which is a very healthy place to be, considering that our city is one of the few full-service cities in the, in the county. Again, I remind everybody that we've, we've received the GFOA award for our budget book for the last two years. First time in our history, never been attempted before. Our budget books are now understandable, we can all follow along, we can read them, we know what's in there, which can't be said of previous budget books. So how is our tax dollar divided? Out of every dollar that you pay on your tax bill, twenty-eight cents is what we use to run our city. That is, that shows that, that we are by far one of the smaller portions of that dollar and where it goes. Seventy-two percent of every tax dollar you pay go to other sources. Those sources include the county, thirty-five percent of your, of your tax bill goes to the county. That includes countywide debt, debt services for the county, fire and rescue services, library, public school, the public school rates twenty-four percent, which goes for operating and debt services. Then there's a regional rate that includes South Florida Water Management. It includes the Everglades Fund, includes the Yocochobee Basin and Find. And lastly, one percent is for the Children's Trust. So what are our budgetary funding sources? Our total budget is comprised of general fund revenues, restricted fund revenues, and from, and or from grants which we, we use to, for capital projects. There's always, there's always challenges ahead, there's the potential for state level tax rollbacks. There's a, there's a potential for declining sales tax revenues. There is a possibility of a real estate market turn, although, downturn, although I'm hoping that that's going to be at passus soon. We do have an issue in collecting longstanding debts that is owed to us from some of our enterprise funds. We had over eight hundred thousand dollars of outstanding debts that's owed to us from sanitation and water and sewer. And of course, there's always rising insurance costs, although we've been able to manage that pretty well in the last couple of years. We need to ensure that we overcome challenges. I'm not going to go through these, you can read them, you have them in your, in your booklets and this, this presentation will be up online. So I'm going to skip these so we can get to where we're going. Our budget goals are here, is to improve the level of services. We want to invest in as much software as we can for efficiency. We need to upgrade and we've done a fantastic job in doing so in the last years in upgrading our equipment. We want to support our employees with the proper training and resources. We want to enhance communications to ensure that we have a connected community. And lastly, but again, most importantly, is to boost the residents' quality of life, because frankly, our residents deserve it. Grants, again, I, I touched on that briefly. These are the grants that we have been able to acquire so far and we're actively pursuing more and I am, I'm sure that our grant writer will be able to bring home a few other grants during this fiscal year. So what are, so what are these grants going to do? Well, some of these grants are going to allow us to start funding phase two of the recreation center, providing us for our tennis courts, providing us for our pickleball, providing us for the covered basketball and volleyball courts. It will also allow us to have new, new playgrounds, new bathrooms and concession building and additional parking. We also have another issue that we are actively working on right now, which is to rewrite our comprehensive plan. We're out of compliance, we've had a hard, hard time trying to put the comprehensive plan together, but we've been able to luckily put it together. In fact, the state didn't even have a copy of our old comp plan. We've had ordinances that have affected the comp plan that are in direct conflict in one section from another and we have had zero community engagement performed by previous administrations, which we will be rectifying as we go forward in rewriting our comprehensive plan. We have other capital improvements that we're looking at. We're looking at upgrades for our water department. We, as you know, we've gotten a grant to replace some of the, some of the pumps. We will use the CITT money diligently on the transportation for our on-demand services and we will continue to use our CITT funding to help us with speed tables, traffic mitigations. And I'm pleased to report that we are now in the process of getting bids to start doing sidewalk repair and sidewalk replacement in some of the areas around the city. We also want to ensure that we have funding for our summer camps. We had the honor of receiving a Children's Trust grant this year for a STEM project that's been very well received and we hope that we can continue to grow that partnership with the Children's Trust. So what are enterprise funds? Enterprise funds are self-supporting governmental accounts that use user fees to cover the cost for services like utilities and building permits services. They promote financial transparency and they reduce the tax burdens by operating independently from the general funds. One of the core issues that we've had here for the last decade is that we've had to use our general funds to supplement enterprise, which is really something that should not happen. That has actually curtailed this mayor, this commission from being able to provide the services to the community that they needed to because we've had to borrow money to fund our enterprise fund. I'm pleased to report, you've heard our finance director. With your support, we've been able to right that wrong and both our sanitation and our sewer and water funds will be solvent this year and they will no longer be a drain on the general fund. Staffing, we're building a very strong team here in West Miami. We are committed to this community. We are committed to ensure that this one, the community becomes one of the best places to live in all the county. It is now, we have awesome police, we have awesome sanitation and sewers, we have awesome public works. And now we just need to make sure that we continue to hone in and provide for our residents what they want. As a reminder, our millage rate is currently at five point two, five point nine two mils and we are proposing later on tonight to lower that to five point nine. That will be the maximum millage rate established from there. As we work closer and more diligently with the mayor and the commission, we may be able to shave a little bit more off of that. With that, again, some of the budget highlights is that our utility rate adjustment tonight will lower that rate. Our millage rate, we are, we are promoting a lower rate and we want to make sure that we continue to make this city very, very proud of what we do. We're here to, if I have any questions, we're here to answer any of your, any of your questions. I do have one other thing to say and then I'm done.
Go for it.
We have, if I can have Jenny come up for a second? We have a, 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 a survey that's up online that she wants to promote because we need to get some responses to it.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commission. Thank you for allowing me to come here and discuss this project that we were funded for through the TPO to put together a bike and pedestrian safety plan for the city. We will be doing walking audits with our students from the STEM program next Wednesday, next Tuesday, excuse me, to include that engineering portion of the program with them. And we would like to get more participation with our survey to get the public's input. So we're asking the community, the people out there listening, please click on our communications lady. Rebecca will be putting this as well as a link so that it's easier to access rather than the process, as I just learned today, of snapshotting and being able to get that QR code. So we're asking for more participation from the community. And August second, we will be, that is a Saturday, at ten AM, we will be having a community walking audit beginning at Sylvania Heights, the elementary school. And we're going to do, it's about a one-mile walk and we will have a pleasant ending close to the Latin America that's on the corner of Eighth Street. So we would like to get more of the community involved so we can hear your voice and make improvements for bicycle and pedestrian improvements for our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I conclude my report.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for the manager on his report?
It was a great presentation. It was a good one.
Very nice. Well, I think it was pretty robust and obviously this, Mercy, this body will have a lot of time to sit with the manager as we go through this budget cycle, we're just the beginning of it. And, and you know, I look forward to working with you on another budget and our finance team and departments and I think we're going to have another incredibly productive budget year where we can maximize the next year. Anyone else? If not, let's, I know we haven't even gotten to the agenda yet, so let's start, well, we still got, next item, please.
Item seven, report of the city attorney.
Nothing new to report.
Beautiful. Next item, please.
Item eight, report of the city engineer.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Tom Mission. I'll be quick, really just want to report on the water project. I know you guys have been seeing all the activity out there, we're nearing the end. There's light at the end of the tunnel. So we're finishing up the last stretch of water here on Sixty-second, which obviously has been very disruptive. We've had a few just construction setbacks as we've been working through there, countering some unforeseen lines with FPL and so forth, so we've been delayed a little bit in getting out of that road. We're hoping in the next couple of weeks to be able to get out of there and then just start restoration and hopefully start seeing the roads back to normal. One question I've been getting is regarding the restoration, the roads will be restored from edge to edge. It's not just what you're seeing in some of those other roads, that it's just a patch on the trench that's temporary. We'll come back and restore all those roads edge to edge, so we'll have new roadways. Other than that, we're looking at going out to bid for the next phase, hopefully next month is what we're shooting for, for phase three. And as the manager said, we have a bunch of new toys to play with, so we're excited about the projects that are coming up. I've met with him already and we're, we're planning the next endeavors. So I think that's all I got.
I'll keep bringing you the money, you just got to get it on the ground.
Let's go.
Go ahead.
Any chance when we start the restoration phase, we can slap a couple crosswalks down Sixty-second? Any update on that?
We'll see how, we'll see how the timing works out. I don't have a word yet on that in particular, on whether or not we can move forward yet with that crosswalk, but I do owe you that.
Yeah, can, can we get an update on that and then, manager, can you send it out to myself as well? I'm curious.
Yeah, I'll get an update from the traffic engineer.
Thank you. Anyone, anyone else for the engineer? No, I think you're off the hook, alright.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item nine, committee reports.
Anyone for committee reports?
Send a upcoming item, we'll discuss it later on.
Okay, I'll take this opportunity. First of all, like the manager mentioned, July fourth event was flawless. It was probably the best one we've, we've done to date, for sure. People were very, very happy, the, the organization this year was incredible. Just incredible job all around from police to, to Mercy and Ivan, I mean, everyone was, I saw, I saw, I saw Yanni out there picking out. Everyone was all hands on deck and, and it was great and the residents that I've spoken to really, really appreciated it. So thank you for that. Number two, I, I am immensely. Number two, I am immensely proud of the work we do in getting the grants and appropriations. Like the manager mentioned, we did get 1.65 million total from state appropriations this year. So again, I want to thank our representative, Demi Busata, Senator Eliana Garcia, and the governor and his team, and, you know, the chief of the policy and budget in the governor's office, and his deputy chief of staff, and everyone that I spoke to and definitely helped us along the way in making sure that we didn't get vetoed. And, you know, I want to thank everyone involved in that process. The manager mentioned also, we got $1.5 billion coming in through the TPO. That's something me and him have been working on with the TPO, which obviously I sit on, and we're excited to see how we deploy that money to better and incredible corridor we have on 16th. With that, I want to step in here on the appointments. Madam Clerk, I know we have a rendezvous appointment, so you want to make. Let me start on Military Affairs. The Military Affairs Board, just to clean up the records, I want to appoint Ivan Chavez Senior to Military Affairs Board, and I anticipate that he will be the chair of that board. Does anyone else have any appointments on this?
I have some.
Go ahead.
Someone for the board, Miles Rico.
Okay.
Javier Macias.
Javier Macias. Does anyone have, at this moment, you don't have to have at this moment, anyone else have at this moment, appointments for this board? Okay. So we'll take all the appointments together. Madam Clerk, I know we discussed, there's a number of appointments, you know, that need to be cleaned up, so can you read them all out, and then we'll vote on it all together?
Okay, so Military Affairs Board, as you guys have appointed already, Ivan Chavez Senior as chairman by Mayor Diaz-Padrón, Javier Macias by Vice Mayor Chavez, Miles Rico by Commissioner Blanes, and going to the other boards, for Recreation Advisory Board, appointed Anthony Baruna. It is my understanding that you, Mayor Diaz-Padrón, wanted to appoint him to the Recreation Advisory Board?
Yes.
Yes, so Anthony Baruna for the Recreation Advisory Board. For the Branding Board, we have the current members, Lidi Castellanos appointed by Commissioner Chavez, Christian Felipe by Commissioner Chavez, Aime Parazo by Commissioner Blanes, and I have Cristina Baruna from Mayor Diaz-Padrón.
Correct.
Okay, this is the Branding Board. The Art Advisory Board, current members Rolando Llanes, appointed by Commissioner Chavez, Aime Parazo by Commissioner Blanes. For members being appointed, Adrian Lorenzo by Commissioner Ceballos and Nikki Suri by Commissioner Suarez.
All right. Correct.
So that completes the appointments to the boards, and if you want to extend any other.
Does anyone have any further appointments for this moment? I know I have some vacancies left. I know another members have some vacancies left, but the important thing is all our boards get quorum and can start doing their work. Okay, can I get a motion to accept all the appointments?
Motion to accept.
You have a motion?
Second.
You have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? Hearing none, item passes. Let's get into the actual business of the agenda. Let's go.
This is item 10, unfinished business. This item was postponed at the June 4, 2025 commission meeting, and this is a second reading and a public hearing. In ordinance of the City of West Miami, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances by modification of Chapter 12, Planning and Development, adopted zoning ordinance 282, Section 4.32(c) used districts, Section 4.32-4 landscape open space to provide an optional pay in lieu to a city-wide tree trust fund where landscape requirements cannot be met, and to establish a City of West Miami tree trust fund to disburse collected funds to tree planting in the city right of way, providing for payment schedules, deposit accounts, expiration, enforcement, and other applicable regulations, and providing for corrections, severability, conflicts, implementation, and an effective date.
Thank you. This item is a public hearing. Public hearing for this item is now open. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item? I don't see anyone flinching. Public hearing is now closed. Back to the board. Mr. Manager, do you want to, do you want to clean up the context?
There is, yes, Mayor, that the last meeting, Commissioner Ceballos had asked me to look at some of the numbers for us to bring back a recommendation, which we have on page 2 of six of the ordinance. We have capped the period of the payments at 20 years. That is item A. We've also have changed the amount required to be paid by a percentage or a fraction thereof for up to one acre to $650 per every percentage, and for more than one acre, but up to five acres, at $950 per every percentage. That was the three changes that we've asked, that they asked, was raise those numbers on the acreages from the smaller than one, from up to one acre and up from one acre to five acres, and we capped it at 20 years. That change is also reflective on Section 3, Page 4, Section 3, Page 4, 6 of the ordinance, in where we've changed that as well so that not to exceed the 20 years and the prorated amounts of 650 and 950.
Okay.
This is in the commercial area, right?
This is only for the commercial area, yes, sir.
Does anyone from the board have any questions on this item or comments related to this item?
I understand that, because we have to keep bringing different areas. So if we cannot put a tree here, we have to put it there. I make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Yes. Okay, Commissioner Ceballos?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
You all have to accept those changes.
Oh, as an amendment?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner, you motioned as amended, the amendments that he's.
Yeah.
Okay. We have a motion as amended. Commissioner Blanes, do you second it as amended? Please call the roll.
Yes, Commissioner Ceballos?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanes?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padrón?
Yes.
5-0, item passes.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item will be 11c. This is a second reading and a public hearing. An ordinance of the City of West Miami regarding quasi-judicial proceedings, providing procedures for disclosing ex parte communication from parties and party intervenors in quasi-judicial proceedings of the city commission and city wards in which the decision must be based solely on substantial competent evidence in the hearing record and providing for an effective date.
This item is a public hearing. The public hearing for this item is now open. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Back to the board. Does anyone have any questions or comments related to this item?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Call the roll, please.
Yes, Commissioner Suarez, how do you vote? Commissioner Blanes?
Yes.
Commissioner Ceballos?
Although I don't like this ordinance, I understand why we have to pass it. I think we should avoid ex parte communications whenever possible, but yes.
Commissioner, Vice Mayor Chavez Jr.?
Yes.
And Mayor Diaz-Padrón?
Yes.
5-0, item passes.
Thank you. And to address the commissioner's point, I agree. And let this be a recommendation from myself as well. Avoid ex parte communications, but this is probably best to actually achieve some of the better results of this ordinance being in place.
No, we have to do it.
Yeah, we have to do it.
I agree 100%.
But I would agree with you. Do not, do not take this as an invitation to have, you know, unlimited ex parte communications. Next item, please.
Next item, 11d, first reading. An ordinance of the City of West Miami, Florida, establishing stormwater-related standards within the City of West Miami, providing for purpose and intent, providing definitions, establishing minimum requirements, design standards, and procedures to manage stormwater runoff, quality, retention, detention, and infiltration, providing regulations for new development, redevelopment, and certain existing infrastructure, providing for applicability, enforcement, and administrative adjustment, providing for conflicts, severability, inclusion in the code, and providing for an effective date.
This is the first reading.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Yes, Commissioner Blanes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Ceballos?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padrón?
Yes.
5-0, item passes, and the second reading and public hearing of this ordinance will be heard on the meeting. Are we having a meeting on August 6? August the 20th. Okay, August the 20th at 6:00 p.m., second reading and public hearing of this ordinance.
Next item, please.
Yes, next item is item 11e, first reading. First reading of an ordinance of the City of West Miami, amending Section 11.3 of Zoning Code 282 to reduce swimming pool setbacks from 10 feet to 5 feet on side and rear property lines from R1, single-family residential districts, only minimum of 2 and 1/2 feet of previous surface, providing for conflicts, severability, and codification, and providing for an effective date.
Motion.
We have a motion and a second. Who's, is there, is there a commission sponsor on this item?
I believe that would be me.
Okay.
Okay, sponsored by Commissioner Ceballos. Motion by.
This will just bring everything back in line with previous commission.
No, no, I wasn't, I wasn't bringing it up. I was just, I was curious why there was no sponsor.
Motion.
We have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Blanes, second.
Second, maybe.
By Commissioner Suarez. Commissioner Ceballos, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanes?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padrón?
Yes.
5-0, item passes.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item, and second reading, again, second reading and public hearing, August the 20th at 6:00 p.m. Item F, this is a resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami, authorizing the city manager to accept a mitigation offer in the amount of $170,000 from Mirta Margarita Contreras Noah and Laura Rodriguez JTRS on court enforcement liens for court violations of the property located at 1060 Southwest 63rd Avenue, West Miami, Florida, providing that payment of mitigation amount be paid within 10 days of the effective date of this resolution and demolition of the existing structures be completed within 120 days of this resolution, providing that failure to meet said conditions shall result in the liens reverting to the original amount and providing for an effective date.
Mr. Manager, do you want to give some context? I know this property, you know, I'm glad that the few abandoned properties we have in the city are being quickly scooped up and mitigated and getting ready to get knocked down, build new houses, and have our homestead rate continue to go up, because I know who's going to buy that house. It's not going to be a rental. It's going to be somebody who wants to live here. So provide some context, and then we'll go back to the board to discuss it.
They reached out to us after we had done the other house on 15th Street. They saw what we did. They asked us to sit down and try to negotiate something on this house. We did. They had, you know, because of the penalties and for how long some of these items have been, mostly nuisance-type items, the liens have grown up to $888,000. We settled on them paying $170,000 with the proviso that that's paid within 10 days and that the house is knocked down within 120 days. They're, they've indicated that they do, they will knock down this house, and they will be building a new house. I think it's a good thing for the residents in the neighborhood. That house has been a nice one for quite some time, and I think it's a great way to close out this chapter on this house and pay off their debt to the city.
Motion. Second.
If a motion and a second, call the roll, please.
Yes, Commissioner Ceballos, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanes?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padrón?
Yes.
5-0, item passes.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item G, a resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami regarding computer software to facilitate the use of parks and recreation facilities of the city, approving a contract with Amilia Technologies USA, Inc. to provide parks and recreation management software, including management and use of the multi-generational recreation center, providing for an effective date. This item is sponsored by administration.
Go ahead.
We, as I said in our, in our budget presentation earlier, we're trying to bring as much software as we possibly can to make us more efficient and more effective. As we all know, the way that we've been doing parks reservations for rentals, for the use of tennis courts, has not exactly been ideal. This is software technology that will allow the residents to do this online. It will allow the residents, and it will allow us to understand immediately when something is not available, when a class is full, and it's something that we need to do as we move forward with the new, the new multipurpose center.
Absolutely.
The amounts are not drastically huge on this, but the reason why I brought this forward is to, so that we all acknowledge that we are moving the city in the right direction, and we're going to allow our residents greater flexibility in being able to rent these things and be able to see what is available and what's not available, and not having to call around and ask and wait for somebody to call you back. It's pretty, it'll be pretty automatic. The Parks and Rec Boards approved this. They were enthused with the representation that was done by our IT, our IT director, and I highly ask for your support on this.
Vice Mayor, was this the item you wanted to speak on?
Yes, this one and I believe the next one. But I wanted to commend Johan again. IT Department did a phenomenal job with the presentation. They brought three different options to the Parks and Rec Board. This is the one that we settled on. It did hit all the marks that the Parks and Rec Department needs to function and bring it into the new century. It also is the most cost-effective. As the manager stated, there weren't huge numbers, but it still was the most cost-effective, and the Parks Board was thrilled with the presentation and excited for this technology to be implemented now. So thank you again.
Is anyone else on the board, wish to speak? Go ahead, Commissioner.
I want to commend you, Commissioner Chavez, the administration, you, Mr. Manager. This would be likened to having a Ferrari without any fuel, having this big, beautiful building with all these activities and not being able to make it go, make it function. Most cities, just about every single city in the county has this kind of program or similar, and it's about time that we implement something like this. So I congratulate you. I congratulate the recreational committee, the IT department. This is, this is fantastic. This is great, great work.
Commissioner Ceballos?
I just had a quick question, and I agree. This is a very much-needed program. On the breakdown of the service fees and the pricing, the credit card fees, that's not something that the city's going to bear the cost of. That is the end user who's making that payment, correct? Just want to make sure. Okay, thank you.
That is correct, I'm sorry.
Is anyone else, anyone else have any questions? No, get away from that mic. No, I'm just kidding.
Can you talk? Can you talk?
Anyone else have any questions on this item?
Motion.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Did Johan want to say something?
Not unless you want him to, no.
Is that Johan?
Yeah, we don't know.
I can't tell.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, please investigate him.
No, I can't tell if he wants to say something or not.
Yeah, it might be, it might be cute, it might be, we don't know.
I called him up in case you had any other questions, so he could answer. And just, just to be there in the ready. And I do appreciate him being here. He's rather sick, but I do appreciate him being here.
We do appreciate that. The, uh, is anyone against? Just to finish off this item. Those in favor, no against, item passes. Next item, please.
Item 11H, a resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami, Florida, authorizing the city manager to enter into a lease agreement between the City of West Miami and Peterson Harley Davidson of Miami LLC for the lease of one 2025 Harley Davidson FLHTP Electra Glide Police Motorcycle for a term of 36 months at a monthly cost of $835, providing for an effective date.
Does anyone wish to, uh, Commissioner Blanes, you're the police chair?
I like motorcycles, I make a motorcycle.
Oh, I, I will say this, and, and, and I, I, I think our department uniquely uses the motorcycle, you know, the motorcycle availab, you know, option. Most cities just use it as a strict, sort of like the, the Motocop Speed, you know, speed enforcement, that, uh, that people have learned, learned to hate a little bit. But, uh, for our department, it's used a lot more as a very accessible way of policing our streets. And I think that's, that's, you know, is a great, a great use and deployment of, of the, of the asset. So, I, I think it's, I think it's appropriate that we continue that and, and upgrade our, our, you know, our, our assets on this as, and give the resources to police that, that they deserve. So, I'm in favor. If anyone else has any questions?
How much would a sidecar cost so that the commissioner can do a ride along?
I would love to do that.
I'm against that.
I'm in.
We got a motion on this?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? Hearing none, item passes. Next item, please.
Item I, resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami accepting the proposal from Waterworks Metrology LLC for the purchase of 100 water meters in the amount of $39,175 and zero cents, providing for an effective date, sponsored by the, by administration.
Mr. Manager?
Yes, as you all know, one of the first things, one of, one of the first things I did was actually the, the reserve fund. But one of the other things that we looked at very initially was changing all our antiquated water meters to automated water meters, so that we could stop the, the practice of, of estimating water usage, which has really helped us right the wrong on the enterprise fund, which is water and sewer. When we started this, we asked how many water meters we needed. We bought what we thought we needed, but we were slightly short. We have around 65 more that we need to install to be fully automated. And then we also want to have some in reserves, because as you all know, some equipment fails, and we just want to make sure we have enough reserves. The water will come out of the enterprise fund. It will not come out of general. And this will allow us to become a fully automated, uh, fully automated in terms of reading the, the water usage for all our residents.
Okay.
Motion.
Does anybody have any questions from the, from the board before we go?
Oh, we have no other choice.
Okay, perfect. Question, uh, motion?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? Hearing none, item passes. Next item, please.
Item J, a resolution of the Mayor and the City Commission of the City of West Miami repealing and superseding resolution number 202531 and reducing the water consumption, consumption fee portion of the utility bill for its residents by 6% effective October 1st, 2025, providing for implementation and an effective date, sponsored by Mayor Diaz-Padrón.
So, I'll let the manager give some context, but as we all know, we all, we all sit here. The last meeting, we, we took a reduction, um, up. We passed the reduction. This is an additional reduction. We were being very conservative and very careful to make sure that the reductions that we were doing were in line with the revenues that were coming in. And now we feel comfortable making this reduction, but I'll get the manager, give more context to it.
Yes, after we've now gone through three building cycles with the new automated water meters, we've, we've actually been able to really drill down and, and identify what the issues were. The issues were underestimated amounts that were being used, because we were not being able to read our water meters correctly. The issues were they were using the wrong rate, the wrong rate of charge for some of the commercial entities. There was a lapse of being able to charge what is referred to as, as the true-up fee, and the true-up fee, so that I can explain it, is really when, when we start the fiscal year, Miami-Dade Water and Sewer sends us the estimated amount of money that we will be spending on water for that year. By the end of the year, whatever the difference is, is called true-up. We owe it at the next, at the beginning of the next fiscal year. There was an ordinance passed approximately 10 or 15 years ago that required that true-up be charged to our commercial properties. It wasn't done. So, all those.
I beg your pardon?
It wasn't done.
It was not being done?
No, sir. Um, so all those items is what created the issues and the deficits that we were having in our enterprise funds, specifically in water and sewer. Since now, we feel very confident. We've gone through three building cycles. We know where we're at. We know where we're going to finish. We can come back and, and actually lower the rate from where we were. I understand in the past, part of the issue was always blamed on leaking water lines. That is partially true. But the more outs, more, the bigger and more comprehensive plan was the way that they were underestimating the amounts. They were basically estimating out the usage of all our residents, which is no way to really do this. As you all know, enterprise funds are supposed to be self, self-sufficient. And I, and as you heard from the auditors today, for many, many years, for at least a decade, that fund has not been in violation of our ordinances. But we feel very comfortable with this reduction. We will still be able to fund this fund correctly and allow us to actually, uh, plan for the future in the correct and proper way.
Mr. Mayor, might I add?
Yes.
The Finance Director and I were asked to look at the billing historically over many years. And to be clear, the billing was consistently underbilled from the consumption and what was actually being, being billed.
So, so there was some house, I mean, you said, there's some households that were being built correctly, and they were taking the brunt of the, of the, of the cost.
Some were being built.
And then there was some that were being ridiculously underbilled, right? And they were basically getting benefits from their neighborhood being.
Some, many, many, more than a majority, were, for example, consistently underbilled 1,000 cubic feet of water in each bill. It's a fairly consistent pattern. I haven't quite figured out where that comes from. But the, the good news is, as the manager is saying, but I just wanted to make it clear that the previous underbilling has stopped, and you actually can finance your system with a lower stated rate. But in the past, the stated rate was not applied against the actual consumption. It was applied against a lower number.
Yep. Go ahead.
Having, um, been here for a while, from my perspective, the water billing system has always been like, like an enigma wrapped in a riddle. I never really understood why we had so many complaints. Every single quarter, um, there would be dozens of complaints from residents. And basically, the complaint would be, well, the last five, six quarters, my bill's been $180. Why is it 500 now? And, you know, the administration would immediately blame it on a leak, which many times, the resident would have to hire a plumber to revise their, their plumbing to see if they indeed have a leak. As, as, as the manager said, you know, that's, uh, it, it, in many situations, it, it applied. But, uh, in many, not. So, you know, it's, it's incredible to me to, to, to sit here and hear what I'm hearing, that we're actually going to be able to lower, to lower the, the, the amount of money that we charge per cubic feet and still fund this, this enterprise fund. I mean, it, it's unbelievable. So, there was something definitely, definitely wrong with the way that it was being done. And, and, and again, I allude that to, to the number of complaints. Dozens and dozens and dozens of complaints every quarter from, from, from many, many residents. Longtime residents and, and, and new residents and, and, um, I would get calls. I would get calls all the time. People pleading with me that they could not afford the $5 or the $600 water bill. So, I'm really thankful that, that this has been able to be worked out. And I think, Mr. Mayor, that maybe we can have a town hall meeting to explain this to the residents. Because, you know, I, 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 for one, and, 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 you know, having a first-row seat to this, you know, I, I mean, I, I suspected that there was something really wrong, but I, you know, I, I, you know, I don't, I don't do administration, so I, uh.
You know what it sounds like to me? It sounds like you want to make a motion.
Well, yeah. Absolutely. I make a motion.
Sounds like to me.
But I, I suggest that we do a town hall meeting and explain everything to the residents, because, you know, there, there's a lot of misconception out there, you know?
Absolutely. We, we, we're, we're, we're going to be doing a round, well, as, as we discussed in the past, we're going to be doing a, a, a lot of tunnels, so it's not going to be just one.
Because to me, as a 38-year-old, as a 38-year resident, you know, uh, you know, to tell me that they're actually going to lower the, 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 the amount of money that, that I'm being charged per cubic feet, and I'm, and I'm actually going to be paying less, that's, that's mind-boggling. So, and I'm thankful.
And you have a motion with you?
Motion.
And we have?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Call the roll, no.
Make a motion?
We, we, we have a motion in a second. We're calling the roll.
Yes, Commissioner, uh, Savalos, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanes?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padrón?
Yes.
5-0, item passes.
Thank you, next item, please.
Item K.
Mayor, no, go ahead, go ahead.
No, well, she's going to read an item, so what?
No, no, I'm sorry. Go ahead, go, you go, go ahead.
Next item, to read next item?
No, okay, before next item. I want to clarify something, because I forgot a question for the manager. I have understand, the Harley Davidson we are going to lease for 36 months, I think the necessary repairs is included in that price, right?
That is correct. It's got a three-year, 60,000-mile warranty.
So, we are going to rent, but the repair, necessary repairs are going to include in that price.
That is correct.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the clarification, Commissioner. Madam Clerk, read the item, please.
Item K, resolution of the City of West Miami authorizing the city manager to execute interdepartmental transfers before the end of the fiscal year, September 30th, 2025, as prescribed by Charter Section 5-10 titled "Transfer of Funds Between Departments."
Motion.
You have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? Housekeeping done. Next item, please.
Item L, a resolution of the City of West Miami, Florida, determining the proposed mileage rate for fiscal year 2025-2026, setting the date, time, and place for the public hearings required by state law, directing the staff to transmit necessary documentation pursuant to the requirements of Florida statutes and the rules and regulations of the Department of Revenue of the State of Florida, and providing for an effective date.
This is at a 5.90 max mileage, correct?
Mayor, that is correct. What we're proposing from administration is a maximum mileage rate of 5.90.
So, it can go down, but it cannot go up?
We may, we may go lower, but not higher.
We can't go higher. You cannot go higher, but it can go lower.
Motion.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. Call the roll, please.
Yes, Commissioner Savalos, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanes?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padrón?
Yes.
5-0, item passes.
Thank you, next item, please.
Item M, a resolution of the Mayor and the City Commission of the City of West Miami accepting the interlocal agreement to be included in the Miami-Dade County curbside recycling program and providing for an effective date, sponsored by administration.
This is interlocal to continue the recycling? I heard a motion from Commissioner Suarez, second by Vice Mayor Chavez. Call the roll, please.
Yes, Commissioner Blanes, how do you vote? Commissioner Savalos?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padrón?
Yes.
5-0, item passes.
Next item, please.
Item N, resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami authorizing the city manager to extend and execute the agreement with Luke Advertising LLC until September 30th, 2027, with the option to renew the city commission's approval, with the new, with the city commission's approval, the contractor to provide the City of West Miami advertisement opportunity for the city at no cost to the city, and providing for an effective date.
This, uh, this item is an extension. Obviously, these are already on our corridors. The vendor collects the trash. They are, they're trashcans. They do have our city seal on them. And it's, it's maybe uncomfortable for quite some time that there's political advertising on them, you know, with, with the city seal. Minister Manager, is there, was that included in the, in the extension? The, the?
We are prohibiting all, all political advertising.
Prohibiting, prohibiting, uh, political advertising along with other things like tobacco and?
There's a series of things that are being prohibited. Tobacco's one. There's numerous items that are being prohibited. But, uh, but what we've added to that is political advertising. We also raised the fee 5% from $500 a month to 525.
Now, this, this word, the people that was picking up the garbage?
Yes.
When they, when they ate, you know, he was picking up the garbage, and, and never, nobody in town did, used to do that, and they did it. I make a motion.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second?
I just have one question, just to confirm.
Hold your motion.
With the city attorney, just to make sure that when we make those inclusions, that they're, they're, they're in line with applicable law. We're not making any sort of speech restrictions or anything of that nature.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Because the list of items is pretty self-evident.
Yeah, it's self-evident, and it's, and it's, it's, uh, it's standard on a lot of, well, obviously, you're not wearing your city attorney's hat here, but in, in Coral Gables, there's, there's restrictions on ICQ boards that are, that are there in terms of political and social speech. Next item, please. Oh, no, we have a motion. We have a second, a motion in a second. Call the roll, please.
Yes, Commissioner Suarez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanes?
Yes.
Commissioner Savalos?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padrón?
Yes.
5-0, item passes.
Thank you, next item, please.
Item O, a resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami, Florida, relating to parks and recreation, accepting the implementation of a gym membership fee at the Multi-Generational Recreation Center, approving the attached fee structure for the MGRC Gym, authorizing the city manager and Finance Director to establish, collect, and manage this revenue source and providing for an effective date.
I have a note here from the manager that wants an amendment. Well, let's talk about the board, and we'll get the manager after. The board, does we have, do we have any comments on this?
I think that comment might be mine.
No, it is not, but, okay, go ahead.
No? Okay, never mind.
Don't you, you, you make your, make your comment, though.
There are, there is a.
Oh, my apologies. So, the one thing I would like to do is, I think we need to give back to those residents that serve the community, and I'd like to offer a discount for all of our board members and for our staff. So, if the commission will support me, I'd like to see the 50% reduction for both staff and anyone who serves on any of our city boards.
Okay, yeah, I, you know, and I, I hate to mention Coral Gables again, but I know Coral Gables does have, you know, benefits for those who spend their time, you know, serving on our boards. And I think this is a good one. I like the idea, Commissioner. I'm, I'm in favor of the idea. We'll talk about it now. Mr. Manager, do you have, did you have an amendment as well?
No, I said, Commissioner Savalos covered it. It was a staff, but I also want the staff to be, the, the 50% is off the resident rates for the staff.
Okay.
Not from the non-resident rate.
Correct.
So, that's the only caveat that I would like to add to it.
I'm in favor of that. Commissioner Blanes, do you have a comment?
No, no, I, I think it's a great idea. Thank, thank you for bringing that up.
No, no, I, I think it's a great idea. Thank, thank you for bringing that up.
Vice Mayor?
Just a comment. Uh, John Michael Lopez, our Parks Director, was given an assignment a couple of months back to go and look at fees all around different municipalities. And this, these numbers weren't reached. Coincidentally, we, we had an actual graph that was given to us, presented to us by him, and I want to commend him for that. But we wanted to find a balance between managements. We wanted to find a balance between a management state that would cover a lot of the costs it takes to run a gym, but also to make sure that our residents are getting something that's affordable and that they're going to be able to enjoy and, and afford, obviously. So, I commend our Parks and Recs, uh, department, the personnel from our city, our residents, their volunteer time on that board. Thank you. We had a lot of meetings with regard to this, and, uh, I really want to thank them for their time.
Absolutely. And, uh, your board is an array job, um, with you as the leadership of the vice mayor. Commissioner Sevallos, I like the idea. Um, I think it sounds like you stole the manager's thunder a little bit with this.
My apologies.
But, uh, with the staff. But, uh, I think it's, I think it's great. Obviously, we're, we're trying to reward the people who, who volunteer their time in the city, and we're also trying to, uh, make sure that our employees are, are not only happy, but happy and healthy. So, I think it's, I think it makes sense, and it makes sense for our insurance coverage as well. So, next item, please. I mean, well, uh, let's get a motion.
Motion.
And a motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Do we have to do motion as amended?
Motion as amended, please.
Motion as amended.
Motion as amended. Motion as amended?
All right.
Do you have a second? Do we have a second as amended?
Second.
Second. All in favor say aye.
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 Any against? Hearing none, item passes. Next item, please.
Item eleven P, a resolution of the mayor on City Commission of the City of West Miami, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Estada Inojosa for the purpose of serving as municipal slash financial advisors for the City of West Miami to commence on October first, twenty twenty-five, providing for an effective date sponsored by administration.
Mr. Manager, last item?
I, I, well, I'm going to allow the Finance Director to talk about it. Well, I'm not going to allow. I'm going to ask our Finance Director to talk about this item. Uh, what I do want to remind this commission, though, is that this is the firm that helps us get those first two GFOA awards. They're, they're used by numerous other municipalities, and they're very highly respected in their fields.
Thank you. I was going to piggyback off of that a little bit. So, in addition to the GFOA award, there's also an award for our finances. And now that our audits done, we can look forward into the future. In doing so, we can go for the award for the way that our financial statements are presented. And so, it's really another layer on top of the audit to make sure that our financial statements are presented in a way that's easy for our residents to understand. And it's just, it's another layer that makes it easy for the average person to digest so that it's not convoluted. In addition to that, this is going to put us another step to be able to be closer to be rated for bond rating. So, in the future, if interest rates go down and we are improving the quality of our financial statements and we're working with them, this would really put us in a position to be able to borrow money at a lower rate. So, we've been really fortunate enough to look at grants for building a lot of the new capital projects that you've seen. If we are in a position where we went to refinance debt or if we're looking at debt in the future, this would be the perfect opportunity to build a solid credit rating for the city and save money on interest.
Thank you. And, and just to clarify, we don't, we don't, um, obviously, we don't do these things for the awards, but the awards are reflections of how good things are being done, right? So, that's, that's the actual, it's to get things done better.
Yes, because the, really, the process entails is us giving all this information. We give the entire budget. We hand that over to the GFOA, and they look through it. They give us feedback and, you know, they give us tips for improvement almost in the same way that the auditors do. And so, this process would work the same way after we're done with our audit and the way that we issue our financial statements. They would do the same thing. It's, again, we're sending it off to a third party, and they're going through and they're saying, hey, this looks good. These are the areas that you can approve. Because the end result here, you know, not just the award, is to make sure that we're transparent and we're presenting this information in a way that's easy for our citizens to understand.
Yes. All right, back to the board. Any questions for Mr. McCullough, the manager on this item?
Motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Suarez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanis?
Yes.
Commissioner Sevallos?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padrón?
Yes.
Five-zero, item passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's no items of consent. Anyone for good of the order?
I, I do apologize for my long, drawn-out comments.
Well, that is the reason why I, I, I had, I, I told the clerk it would be done at eight, and, and you were the reason. I'm just kidding.
Having dealt with the frustration, uh, in the past of, uh, the residents, uh, and having to deal with so many complaints and now all this coming to light, you know, it's, it's, it's very frustrating. So, um, but, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm glad we're taking a step forward in, uh, and, and, uh, and fixing this issue that we've had that's been wrong for a long time.
Well, we move forward. Go ahead.
In the amount of time that it took him to make his comments, PD responded to our house already in less than eighty seconds.
About a hundred times, right?
Anyone else?
A hundred different places.
Anyone else for good of the order? Uh, we have a number of initiatives, um, that we are starting to, uh, get off the ground. And Gabby, uh, has been, uh, instrumental in getting those, the, the legwork set up. But we have, uh, a number of initiatives that over the summer I think we'll, we'll, we'll start enrolling. And, um, I think they're really exciting for the city. Uh, they cover different aspects of the city. Some are for more elderly residents, some are, some are safety-related, um, some are nature controversy-related. So, we're really excited. Um, we work with a number of partners. Um, and, uh, and, uh, so I look forward to enrolling those and, and, uh, taking part in community events, enrolling together. So, with that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion. You need adjourned.